Hey you guys, what's up my fellow CST people? How is everybody? I hope everyone is doing well. I hope you all had a fabulous Christmas and an awesome new year. I didn't do anything for neither holiday. I was chilling, my son was gone since that and I got a chance to do absolutely nothing. And if you have kids or responsibilities, you know how it is when you can just say, "I am not doing anything." And so that's what I did and I loved it. So now I'm back at it, the year's begun and it's time to hit the ground running baby. We're gonna go ahead and get started with this study session. Now for you guys that don't know me and you haven't seen the video, if you haven't seen the video, go over to YouTube and check it out. You could probably just Google Surgical Tech on YouTube and I think it probably would come up. And then check it out, I guess it's been detailed enough. I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on it. I think the video is really low quality because of my webcam. I hate recording on my webcam you guys and yet again here I am. But this is where I'm at. I guess I need to buy like a better webcam because I never liked the quality of my webcam videos. And so they hardly ever get posted and then I did post that one and you guys actually liked it. And so here we are. I decide, I've decided that it's time for me to further my Surgical Tech career. Okay, so I was a Surgical Tech in the Navy and I decided that I was gonna continue to do that when I got out. And so now, it's been almost 10 years since I graduated, or actually it'll be 10 years in July that it's been since I've been a Surgical Tech. And I never had to take my certification. Like basically you can get a job as a Surgical Tech without having your certification. Once you get to my age or to the level of, to the length of time that I've been doing it, excuse me, you realize that you can't get certain jobs because you don't have the certification. And so now it's time to get the certification. So last year I attempted to take it and I was unsuccessful. I failed it. But it was totally my fault, like it was nobody else's fault because really I should've studied. Like there was no reason for me not to study. I had all the material that I could've possibly needed and I had this, you know, I know what I'm doing attitude and guess what? Two points shy and I was like, "You idiot." I had already had this study guide printed, ready to go. Like there was really no excuse. And so $300 gone down the drain just because I'm an idiot. So I hope you're not an idiot like I am, learn from my mistakes and crack open the book. And luckily, like they, the National Board of Surgical Tech and Surgical Assistance, offer us a outline, the content outline. So let me make sure you guys can see this. So if you go to, there it is, national, so NBSTSA.org. This is the website you need to come to. This will tell you if you're eligible, how to become eligible, what you're eligible for. Are you gonna work with me? Okay, I don't know what mine, I don't know what that is got going on right there. But anyway, so here you go, Certified Surgical Tech. And you guys can come to this page later on. I'm really not gonna go through this because it's like, well, it's four different ways. I guess, I don't know, most people go through surgical, did I click Surgical Assist? Okay, so yeah, most people go through, like go to school and then they have the option. This is the one that I, this is how I am able to, you know, be a Surgical Tech because I was trained in the military. So that's the one that they have me under. And if there's anyone out there, I am gonna cover this. If there's anyone out there that is a military Surgical Tech, please go ahead and get your exam now. And then you can also take the exam for Surgical First Assist, which will be my next adventure hopefully. And so they also have a military option. For the regular CSTs, you, what does it say here? I don't think, must be done within two years. I don't think there is no restrictions and stuff where you have to do the extra 200 cases and take the test. I think it's the same. Or maybe you do have to go back to school. I don't, I don't think you do. I don't know. Application for this path, oh, okay. So wow, so you got to the end of the year to get that one. And this one, oh wow, look you guys. Applications for this pathway will no longer be accepted after December 1st. So they're giving us a year to get this shit together. So I'm gonna make sure I do this because damn, I didn't know they had that. So yeah, they just put this up here. That wasn't there for too long. But that's good to know. So one year to get my ASR, what is this, First Assist? But anyways, I'm babbling. So let's go ahead, it's five minutes into this game, let's do this. So anyways, come to this website and the point of me bringing you here is because they offer outlines to their exams, which makes for a fantastic study guide, or at least guideline. So you go here, you click on examinations like I did and then you'll see the outline. And so here's the breakdown of the exam. Oh yeah. Perioperative care is coming in at 105 questions. This is the largest section. So I mean, if you need to study a section, this probably would be a good section. But you know, at the same time, I feel like, not intraoperative, that's coming in at 66. Is that right? 29 is preoperative. 66 is intraoperative and then post-op it would be 10. That's a total of 105. Additional duties is 20. 10 of them are administrative personnel, questions. Another 10 is equipment sterilization and maintenance. That's the 20. And then this is the top, this is the subject that I would think would be the most difficult. And that's because it's, I mean, if you don't like science or not even like science, I feel like you have an advantage in this area if you have experience in the medical field. I mean, yeah, you're gonna have advantage if you have experience in any field if you're taking exam for it. But if you're fresh out of school and you're taking an exam, I mean, the chances that you pass them are okay, I'm pretty sure. But I feel like if you can relate, if you can find a way to relate or apply some of these things you should read into what you already know, it just makes it that much easier to retain it and understand, you know, what it is reading. So AMP, I mean y'all, yeah, that's a serious subject. To me it is. I don't know how anybody else feels about AMP, but I feel like anatomy is just, you know, it's just so much to the human body that it's just one of those subjects that I feel like could go on and on and on. So yeah, but it's, they're only asking you to know 30, you know, 30 things. And they even give you a breakdown of the categories that they're gonna be, you know, discussing. So that makes it so much easier. And then the last one is microbiology. Yeah, that's probably a tough subject too. And definitely pharmacology, surgical pharmacology. Like I feel like this is the hardest section, even though it's one of the small, like it's a medium section. I guess it's the middle one. But I feel like this section will probably take more time to study than the perioperative care, patient care portion of this one. I feel like that'll be, you'll probably be able to kind of feel your way through that. Based off of the questions and reading the questions, I think you might be able to, you still need some knowledge, but you can probably learn, know this because of what you've learned in school versus knowing the AMP and the, my dog is making a weird noise, and microbiology and surgical pharmacology. So anyways, when y'all get a chance, go to the website, print it out. Then you'll know what you should be studying or what you might need to cover more or whatever. So there it is. I am still really shocked that they're changing the ways that you can. That's crazy. So yeah, it's crunch time. Anyway, moving right along to the PowerPoint that I so graciously put together here. Let's figure out how to work it. Yeah, there we go. And let's center this, that is annoying. There we go. All right, you guys, here we go. So, oh, I guess if you, well, yeah, so here we go. Hold on one second. I can't see what I wanna do. Okay, you guys, here we go. So we're gonna take the test to be a Certified Surgical Tech. And here are my notes. And so as you see, I have the more, what is it, moretrix? I don't know how to pronounce that, but there it is. I think it's mom-tricks. I don't know. Anyways, their study guide, the link to the study guide below is below in the description. And yes, you guys, if you purchase it through the link, I will get a percentage of it for like a commission, it's a commission. But the link is through Amazon and basically what they do is they, you download it. And then I went and I printed it out at Office Depot. It's like 30 something dollars though. Like they can, they'll send you a copy for 30 something dollars. I think it's like 32 or 33 dollars. Or you can download it for the same exact price. But I wanted mine like right then and so I went ahead and downloaded and then I sent it to Office Depot and they printed it out for me and posted those in it. So yeah, anyways. So as a disclaimer, I am not associated with the National Board of Surgical Tech and Surgical Assistance, I am not. And then I also put in there about the link in the description. So yeah, if it's a link to a product in the description bar, you guys, yeah, I get a commission. But the only thing I think that will be in this description bar would be the link to this, this study guide. But I also have two apps and both of them I got from the ASR, the National Board of Surgical Tech and Surgical Assist website. So if you go to the Play Store, I don't know if it's on iTunes or if you people with iPhones can get it. But if you have a tablet that doesn't require you to have Apple, you can download it from the, what is all this place? Oh, you can, you can download it from the Play Store and just, you know, use it on your tablet or on your desktop. But both apps I think were like $39.99 or maybe they were $49.99. But yeah, they, they're pretty pricey. I did take some screenshots, so I do have a few quiz questions that we'll probably be going over. But it's a lot of questions, you guys, and so I'll do my best. I'm not gonna cover everything in this first video. Like there is no way that I would be able to do it. But I will try to be as consistent and as thorough with you guys as I can. So I'll be posting it, posting the next video to this next Monday night at 9:00. So instead of me doing the hangouts like I was gonna try to do, I'm just gonna post it on my YouTube channel because it was some weird stuff happening and it didn't show my screen and it was just, it was a mess. So anyways, here we go. That's the exam. We've already went over this, you guys, and there's the outline below, or the link to the outline below. And I really, 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 really highly suggest you go get it. Like when I was in the military, we had to take these exams, the advancement exams. And the advancement exams came with a bib and that's basically what it was. They gave you an outline of what was gonna be on the test. And so that's kind of how I took the approach to that outline. So anyway, that's the book, this is the book. Oh, this is what I was trying to say. So is Memetrix? Oh, I spelled it wrong on the other page, so yeah. Memetrix. Anyway, that's what it looks like. All right, so y'all already saw that the perioperative care portion of the exam is 105 questions. Let me make sure you can see that. 105. Oh wow, let's stretch this, hold on you guys. Oh, I can't do it right now. Maybe wait. Okay, so I just had to pause it, but I got it in there. So there you go, it's in the frame now. So 105 questions. The perioperative portion, like I was saying, of the test covers 105 questions. And like I told you, that is a really big section. So yeah. There's three parts to it. So when you start, when you look at the study guide itself, let's go to the study guide, I'm gonna come back to that. But when you look at the study guide itself, you will be able to see the outline. I'm gonna show you how they break it down. The test, the test down, or the book, how they break the book down, excuse me, not how they break the test down. But see, they break it down in perioperative and then preoperative, intraoperative and postoperative. But when you start looking at the, the, the actual note, the study guide, you see that they come, they start at operating room cycle. So that's where we're at right now. So back to the PowerPoint. I can't see it. Oh, that's not it. There it is. Okay, oh man, it took a while to get to the beginning. All right, I guess I'll do that again. So anyway. Oh, I need to go back. Yes, three phases. And then, so we're in the operating room cycle. I thought this little image was really cool, so I plugged it in right there. And I only thought it was cool because this is, this is basically how it will look visually. So preoperative, pre meaning before, prior to, intro meaning during, and post meaning after. So operative, you know, that's what you're doing. Anyway, so y'all should know what operative is. Anyways, you put those words together and what you get is the first one. Phase one, preoperative. So really, this is the beginning of the day. That's how I see it. The beginning of the day, the beginning of the case, the beginning of everything. All right, so when you come in, in the OR, the first thing that you will do is you will do a wipe down. Like you have to do a wipe down as part of your, like that's just the rule. You come in, you do a wipe down. And normally have these like sandy wipes or some type of solution that you use to wipe down, the stuff, the lights, the bed. You typically don't mop in the morning. But you do wipe everything else down the back table, the mail stands, you know, everything basically that's in the OR. After that, you do your case card check. At least that's what I would do. I would go make sure that, well first you need to know, okay, this part isn't on, in there study guide. But first, the first thing you need to know is what you're doing that day. So you would go and ask or figure out what your assignment is and go ahead and go to your room. Once you find out whose room you're in, you would grab your case card and then go to the room, get the room ready and then bring your case. Once the room is, once you've done your initial clean, then you can bring your case card in the room and anything else that you're gonna need for that case. So if it's laparoscopic, you know, you're gonna need a towel and a monitor. You need to make sure you got your cameras, your light cords, you know, everything that you need. Troll cards, everything that you're gonna need. Make sure you got enough gas, make sure that the towers are working. That check equipment, that's real. Especially when you're dealing with digital or technology anyways, that stuff always is, it just messes up. And so because you're the surgical tech, you're gonna be expected to know how to fix it or at least how to run the check to make sure it's working properly. Once you got everything situated, you already know, you know, you got all your case cards checked. I would go ahead and check all my cases if you could. At least the first two or three, like the first two definitely. If you could get that third one in there, go ahead and go for it. But definitely get as many as you can checked out. And so once all of that is done and the case is, the case card has been checked and you put all your specialty equipment and everything that you wanna have open, you put, you know, you put it where they concede to open it. Then you create this sterile field or a sterile environment. What happens is typically you're gonna open up your stuff on your back table and while you're opening up, either, well not opening, it should already be open by this point. But the patient is coming in the room and so either your field, basically you should've already set up your back table. Like the patient is coming to a room that's already sterile. Like I feel like by the time a patient come in there, I should have already been counting and ready to like, sometimes I get done and I'm able to break and help position a patient. And so that's, so basically that's where we're at right now. You create your sterile field, you position the patient. You also make sure that the patient is prepped. So either the nurse is gonna prep the patient or you're gonna prep the patient. The doc might prep the patient. Also, when you're positioning, you need to make sure that you have, whatever you need to make sure that that person isn't harmed during that procedure. So if they're laying on their side, you know, in a lateral position and you need to make sure you have enough air crate or padding, whatever your place has, you need to make sure you have enough that. You might need an armrest onboard and stuff like that. So just make sure you have all that stuff ready. But you'll know in the beginning, I guess, when you find out what case you're doing, what you'll need. But yeah, so once you get the patient positioned and then they're put to sleep, then everybody that needs to scrub in, scrubs in. That's basically what happens. Everybody gets the patient position, everybody, you know, is doing their thing. But once the patient is asleep and, you know, it's time to make sure that whoever needs to be scrubbed in, is scrubbed in and, you know, you go from there. So this is what the book has to say about it. I'll give you guys a few seconds to look at it. I'm not gonna read it to you, I'm sorry. I just don't believe in reading PowerPoints. All right, so if you need to, if you need some more time, just come back to it, it's here for you. All right, so phase two and phase three. Intraoperative phase is basically when you're doing the actual surgical procedure. And phase three is the postoperative phase. And that's when the patient, the case is over and the patient is being transported or transferred to the PACU or already in PACU. But to go into detail, there's some more, there's some more notes for you. And I did highlight a lot of the stuff. The stuff that I highlighted, that's what I felt was important. It's stuff right down here. But I didn't do this one because you'll see in a second. All right, you guys, I'm moving on to the next one. And here is where really the case is over. If you go to the, I'm gonna back up. If in the intraoperative phase, the biggest thing that you need to know is, oh, you know what? I meant to mention this on the post, on the preop, but I guess this is the appropriate place because this is where they put it at. But you need to make sure you count and do a timeout before the case is started. You can't do anything until you know how many instruments you have and what you have. Like you can't, you can't start surgery on somebody and you don't know that you have six Kellys. Because if you end up at the end of the case with only four, y'all gotta figure out what the other two are and somebody's either going dumpster diving, we're calling x-ray. Just make sure that you do the count first. And I would, like, I personally would try to count before a patient come in the room, but sometimes you don't have that luxury. So you count as fast as you can. Hopefully you're familiar with your set, so you already know what's in it and what should be in it. And so you count, once you're done counting, the, and the patient is asleep and everybody's scrubbed in and right before the doc gets ready to cut, right before that initial cut, y'all need to have a timeout. Or not right before, but it needs to be before he cuts that patient or in the process of, it's a little gray area right there. But you're supposed to do your timeout and your count before. And yes, it's just as much the surgical tech's responsibility to say, "We need to do a timeout" as it is anybody else in that room. And sometimes it is the surgical tech that is saying, "Can we do a timeout? We gonna, like who is, like..." And not to say you gotta be a smartass, because I am. But I'm like, you know, are we gonna count? Or are we gonna, are we gonna figure out who this person is? What are we doing? You know, like, and you don't have to be a smartass with everybody, but sometimes you do. Especially if it's somebody not paying attention to what's going on. So anyway, back to the notes. Also, the note, the, it's, oh, sorry you guys. So anyways, also the doors and the doors should be closed at all time when a case is going on. You do not, the door should never be open for one. I feel like the door should always be closed to the OR. I feel like that. But it should always definitely be closed when the case is going on. The door should not be open. It is people walking back and forth throughout the hallways, picking up dust and everything. Keep the doors closed, like, like for real, just keep the doors closed. Don't be running in and out of the OR, don't be doing it. Like just don't keep the doors open. I do not like that. Especially if it's a laparoscopic case, like that just messes up the people who are, who been in the room eyes because typically it's a dark room. And so then you got this person that just busts in and now it's all bright and you're like, "Dang, now my eyes gotta real just..." So anyway, moving along, what else is important in this part? I think I got it all for you. If you didn't get this one in, you can bring it, you know, record or replay this video at any time. I'm getting tongue tied. So post-op is definitely the case is over, the patient is in the PACU or en route to the PACU. The first thing that you need to know is you do not break down your sterile field until the patient is extubated on the gurney and walk, like being rolled out the door. Or you can ask anesthesia if it's okay. Like that's an option. That's how I was trained. I was trained that you always ask anesthesia if you can break. And if you wanna know why you ask anesthesia, because they are the ones that are monitoring this patient. They are in control of the head of the patient. If y'all don't know, the head of the patient contains, that is your airway. They also monitor your, you know, they, they pretty much make sure your ass don't die. Or, you know, basically. And so that's who you need to ask if you can break. You don't need to ask the doctor. You do need to ask the doctor some things, but if you wanna break, you know, or if you aren't sure if you can break, just ask them. And some of them might look at you crazy, but then other people won't. They'll understand like why you asking. But just kind of when you go to your first place, you know, if you haven't been somewhere, then you can kind of get a feel for what everybody's doing. But for test purposes, for testing purposes, it says that you are not supposed to break your sterile field until the patient is safely transferred to a postoperative gurney or a bed and taken to the PACU. So that's what you go with. And the first thing, when you're looking at what you're breaking down, the first thing that I break down on my back table is my sharps. And I do that because typically, and you can see that here, that there, typically it's somebody in the room with you, like that's gonna help you break down. And so I try to make sure I have all my sharps in the sharp container or in my needle book, so I can put it in the sharp container. Because I don't want one of my coworkers coming to try to help me and they end up getting stuck or I end up getting stuck. So that's the first thing that I dispose of. The next thing is the specimens. As you can see here, you need to make sure that when you retrieving a specimen from the doctor, when the doctor's handing you the specimen, you ask him what it is. What is this? So you can know what to relay. And if you don't know how to spell it, get your skin marker and write it down. Ask him to tell you how to spell it and write it down. And if he doesn't know how to spell it, then whatever. But just ask him how to spell it or her, how to spell whatever it is. And if it's on the side, like if it's a breast, you need to know if it's right or left. Like you always need to know where it comes from and, you know, you need to know what it is. And so they, they're gonna tell you and then you're gonna tell the nurse if she has it hurt. But typically you're gonna relay that message. And you wanna make sure that you got that specimen off your back table before you break it down. You can get rid of them sharps if you want to, but you need to make sure that that specimen, I typically, even though it's in this section, I typically pass off my specimen before the case is over. Because I don't wanna be the one to throw it in the trash. I typically just go ahead and tell the nurse, you know, if she's ready, if they're ready, then I'm gonna pass it off. If they're not ready, then I can't pass it off because they're not ready yet. And so in that case, then you need to have it labeled and put in a certain location so you'll know where it's at every time. Like you don't need to, if you know you put your specimens in the top left-hand corner of your back table every time, then you don't need to worry about where your specimen is because you already know you put it in the same place every time. So that's, that's the thing with the specimens, the trash, take the trash out. Make sure you do it according to your facility policies. Cause some people, they have different rules and different ways. they have different rules and different ways, so I'm not, I don't even get into that. I've, I've had to label, I've done all these, and so. And at the end of the case, after everything is taken out of the room, um, all the supplies are put back that you haven't used, then you need to clean, or, well, I guess you could do this simultaneously, but you need to clean the room. It's gotta be re-cleaned, they gonna turn over the room. So if you got a team that turns over the room, that's, that's pretty cool. But most techs and most hospitals will be turning the rooms over themselves. And so you need to do, know how to do that efficiently. And then also, um, at the end of all that, you basically just set up the next case, so. Alright, you guys, that was the operating room cycle. So now we are moving into, we're moving into the instrument cycle. And the instrument cycle is the same exact three phases. So this should be fairly simple for you guys to, you know, retain, because it's, it also is break- broken down into three areas. And here you go. Um, like I, you guys, you can come back and, and make your own notes of these notes, but these are directly from the book. And so, I highlighted, um, make sure you have knowledge o- of the procedure. And you guys, honestly, that's just gonna make the case go by that much smoother, honestly. If you know, you know, the anatomy. And if you know what you're doing, if you know the procedure, then you'll know if you need any type of specialty equipment. And you also need to make sure you have the surgeon's preference card. And you need that, because it's gonna help you, you know, it's gonna outline what he needs and what he wants, and you need to know that. So yeah, just giving you guys a moment to read over this. I want you to read all of it, so you'll, you'll get a better understanding, not just of what I'm saying, but you can actually read what's in the book. Alright, here we go, moving on. So as you can see, the intraoperative phase is a little bit longer, or at least the paragraph was a little bit longer, which makes sense, because it is the actual part where you will be doing the procedure as is, it is in the operating room cycle. The difference is, in this part for the instrument cycle, this is where you'll actually be handling the instruments, passing the instruments. And the thing about passing instruments, you guys, is you really need to know how to pass the instrument ef- effectively, efficiently, whichever word a- applies to that, to that. You need to know how to pass the instruments, because if you gotta pass the instrument to the doc, and he's fumbling, he's gonna get frustrated, 'cause he's expecting it to be in his hand, like, in one swift motion. He just wants it, or she, I'm sorry, I say he, you guys, but I work with a lot of male doctors, so. Anyway, they're gonna wanna a really smooth transition, not all the fumbly and twisting, um, instruments around. Like, they wanna grab the instrument and be able to use it in one motion. And basically, your job, which this is underestimated, 'cause this is, I think, the only place they put this, but your job is to anticipate the surgeon's need. And the only way you can do that is by knowing the case. And the only way you're gonna know the case is by being in the OR as much as possible. So definitely scrub, 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 scrub. Alright. Definitely back to the, the an- anatomy, you guys, you gotta know what normal is, so you can know what abnormal is. Hmm, the instrument list, the count sheet. So, when I was speaking of the count in the operated, the operation, or, ugh, tongue tied. As I was speaking of the count sheet in the operating room cycle, the, um, this portion actually goes into detail about the count sheet. The count sheet is gonna give you a list of the, the instrument sets in the set. And the instrument sets in the, they gonna have the instruments, the names of the instruments that's in the set, and how many of that instrument is in the set. And you need to know that, because like I said, you need to know when you're counting, what you started with. So at the end, you'll know what you should have. Yeah, it's just, yeah, like it says, the itemized list, that's all of this of the instruments. And then, oh, when you're counting, you, it's always the surgical tech and the circulator. They don't cover that in here, I don't think. If they do, I might have overread it, or overlooked it. But it's, it's normally at most places, it's got to be the circulator. Oh, excuse me, you guys, and it's got to be the nurse, so, or the nurse and the surgical tech, excuse me. That's the, the nurse that's circulating and the surgical tech. That's who does the count. The person that initials it is the person that assembled it. So this isn't the same person. It could be the same person, but we gonna say this is, is two different people. Because SPD is the one that's processing it. So if something's wrong with the set, they're gonna go back to the person that initiated it and then figure out what happened. But the count itself is done by a, the circulator and the surgical tech, definitely. And if you were be- when you do, I don't even think they c- cover when you do it. They might not even care, but you need to do the count, you know, before you do the case. But you also have to make sure that, um, where is it? I don't think that happened in here. Okay, so yeah. I'm really surprised, but yeah, the circulator, the circulator and the nurse does the count. And on the list, I'm just surprised, I had to reread that, you guys, I was just surprised that I didn't, um, notice that before. But anyway, once you get your, um, your count done, hang on one second. Alright, you guys, I'm back. So I had to go look through some notes and just make sure I wasn't overlooking anything, and I'm not. So they don't cover, um, in this actual study guide, it doesn't cover, um, who goes first. But you, or who, not who goes first, but it doesn't cover if you need, if you need to have the circulator and the surgical tech. That's what I was trying to figure out, like, is that the rule? But it might not be. I think that's just something that I learned over the years. But anyway, um, when you leave the room, like, if you're gonna be relieved to go to lunch, the person that's relieving you has to do the count. Um, and then when you are, like, yeah, any type of relieving. So if you leave and somebody come over, comes over and takes over your back table, your mail, that's meant, that person does the count. So if you're relieving somebody, then you need to count. And the basic concept behind that is, that person already knows where everything is. You need to be able to lay your eyes on, you know, all of the stuff that you use, or that is being used. And, um, this is true, though, if anything happens, or if the count is off or anything, you need to let the doc know. You also need to let the doc know that the count's correct, but, um, if it's not correct, you know, you need to let him know, because they have to order x-rays for that. And the postoperative phase is the last phase. And this is when you get in all your instruments, that the surgery's over, hopefully it was successful. And when you get your instruments back, you need to make sure that, um, you put everything in its proper place. Like, sometimes you'll have instruments that's dirty, and not so much dirty because of the, the procedure, but dirty because of the area of the procedure. So if you doing, like, anything with bowels and vaginas and, um, rectum, then that's a dirty, those are dirty instruments. And so you have to have, like, a separate basin for those, or something, if you're gonna be working with those type of instruments, because you can't mix dirty instruments with the other ones. So, in this, in this case, I'm, I'm sure they're meaning dirty as in the ones you use, but I did wanna elaborate on that. Like, depending on, like I said, if you're doing a bowel obstruction, some of the things that you use to occlude the obstruction, once the obstruction has been occluded, then you can't use those tool, those instruments anywhere, because they have bowel on it, and bowel is dirty. And the same thing is the vagina, like, the vagina's dirty, and so is the butt and the penis, the ins- well, the urethra. But no, not even really the urethra, it's not dirty, it's sterile. So, excuse me, I'm gonna take that back. Not the penis, but the vagina is definitely dirty. So now, on so many levels. So anyways, the, um, once you get all your instruments, and you've done your count, and you have everything accounted for, then, um, you're breaking down, the case is over, the patient's gone, it's okay for you to tear down your, um, sterile field. You go and you put the instruments that you used into, we're gonna say the proper, as it says, being or area, because each facility have their own, like, way of doing things. And then, either SPD is gonna come get it, or you're gonna take it to SPD, however they do it. And then, once it gets to SPD, that it is, again, cleaned and decontaminated. It is especially, I used to work in SPD too, guys, this is like one of the, this is a layback type job, SPD is, but I like scrubbing, so. Anyways, um, they're gonna inspect it and ma- uh, make sure it doesn't need any maintenance. If it does, they're gonna take it out, and then they'll replace it with one that does work. And then, they reassemble the kit, they sterilize it, and then they, um, send it back to its proper. Or you gotta wrap it if it needs wrapping. Sometimes they need wrapping, they put them in their casks. But once it's sterilized, it goes back to their, um, depart- to the department or wherever it needs to go with, and then it's just there, and so it's time to use it again. And that is it. That is it. Oh, I wrote it correct on here. That's it for this one, you guys. So what I'mma do is, since we have a little bit of time, ooh, what did I do? I'm going to, where are you? Where are you? Oh, I closed it, okay. So let me, um, go through this, these little questions with you guys. Oh, that's not what I wanted. Where is it? What did I put it? I think I put it on my desktop. There it is. Alright, we not gonna go over the, all of, go over all of these. I'm so tongue tied. There we go. Alright, you guys, so I'm not gonna read them to you, but I'm gonna give you a few seconds. I'm only going to fifteen. So, yeah, I'll read it, um, and then I'll elaborate, but I'm not gonna read a question to you. Okay, I have nothing to say about that one. Next one. Uh-oh, did it go? Oh, just try this, yeah. Oh, a C and D, a D and C. So, I, with lithotomy, I kinda remember legs, uh, lithotomy, I don't know, that's kinda how I remember that. But you know, for a D and C, that's GYN, so typically we're on our back. And some stirrups typically. Oh, yeah, you definitely wanna always make sure you use irrigation on bone. The bone gets hot, it'll bleed, it's just not a cool, that's not good. Yep, it goes in your veins. That's the famous, I think Michael Dast made this drug even more famous than what it was already low-key. Whoa, what did I do? Oh. Okay, which of the following? Oh, wait, your positions, I would definitely, like, Google positions and figure out a way to remember them, like. That, you're gonna have to come up with a way to remember them, or you could just, I mean, if you don't need a way. I did, I had to sit there and look at them several times, so this is one of the ones that I kinda automatically, I read them. Yep, to block the nerve, so they can't feel it, the nerve receptors, I should say. We just talked about specimens, so it's appropriate to rap. Yes, especially in GYN, um, cases, you will do this, any, any case, really. 'Cause I've done it when I've collected biopsies. That's probably the best way to do it, because it's all on the Telfa, and the Telfa is nonstick, so they can put the Telfa inside the formulae and then transport it to, um, pathology. And yes, this is, this is correct, um, obviously, because you need a sterile barrier between the unsterile object and the patient. Definitely wanna put that, uh, uh, biological in a difficult place, because what you wanna make sure is that it is completely, um, able to, the sterilant is able to sterilize the items that you're trying to sterilize. So, if you put it in the hardest place, and it doesn't turn the appropriate color, then you know that that load is not good, and you need to figure some other things out. I always put it, the grinding pad on the outside of the thigh. The biggest part of their body, basically, is what you wanna use. Uh-oh, yeah. And what they did was they was trying to, it seems like they trying to confuse you, 'cause it's like, it doesn't matter what position they're in, because that's still gonna be the biggest part of their body. Or the most fleshiest part, I should say. Yep, the fascia, two O. Ooh, like a vise room. Oh, I don't know why I keep wanting to click next. Did y'all see it? Anyway, that's funny. Oh, man. So, this is a Flotron. This, um, device, I'll show you guys what the Flotron is real quick here. And it basically helps, um, like I said, prevents with, um, blood clots. If you've had a baby before, then I'm pretty sure you know what these is. If you've had surgery before, or been in surgery before, then you know what these is. If you have not, then let's show you here, a Flotron. These are Flotrons. This is the one that I normally see. Oh, I thought it was gonna make it bigger. Man, it's two thousand dollars on it. So yeah, or this one, this is the same one. And then these little, those little things on his, on their legs, these little things right here. This is the one that goes all the way up to the thigh. This one stops at, um, below the knee. I don't know where this one goes. But they, um, it's air that's pumped through there, and it just like massages, it feels really good. Yep, that's it. Oh, this is the one, that's what I was trying to show you, this is the one I normally see. And so what happens is, if this one of them get kinked, there's a little person, I don't know where the little person is, but it's a person, and it'll, um, be flashing, and that's when you know that it's a kink in it. Yeah, that's a, that might be an older one, it was kinda old. But anyways, so y'all, that's that, okay. That's a Flotron, that's a DVT machine. Oh, man, I should've stayed over there. So, this is at the base of the, um, well, I guess at the beginning, I don't know how you would say it, of the appendix. Further, listen to me, of the appendix, of the zicon, let's show you. That was funny. I'm a little delusional right now, you guys, I need to go to sleep. Oh, why did I even? What is it? Am I turning on? I thought I put this in already. So that's it down there. How good, okay. So, that's it. This part. So yeah. And then, in reference to... And then, in reference to, that is the secon, that's it down there. And so, let's see what else. So yeah. And that's the bottom part of it. So your appendix, if you look at, it's the, if you pay attention when you're looking at it, now you can see, you know, where the appendix is located in relation to the, um, intestines, and you know, everything else, so you guys, when you, like, studying and you're not sure, just get some, um, Googling on your appendix, your secon. And that's it right there. Let's see if that shows on its flame. Ew. That's yuckiness. So anyway, that's enough of that. And then, how many more do we have? I was gonna stop at fifteen, okay. Which of the following is classified as a clean contaminated? So the genitary nor- the genitary urinary tract is definitely, anytime genital or that, this is genital, and urinary is definitely in that same, um, genital, I should say, and urinary, but genital, I, I'm, other than, it's, you can't, it's just dirtiness, but that's not what this is. I'm not sure, I'm confused, but. Anyway, I'm gonna have to go back and read this one, so, not, not so much on the quest, not so much on the, um, question, but just the answer, I guess. So anyways, you do need to know your, your wound classes. That's what this is basically saying, but I was just trying to figure out what this was, but anyway. Yeah, we talked about it, don't throw it away, I said, did you? And that is the instrument that looks like. What they look like. I don't know what my computer's on, but anyways, that's what it looked like, I was trying to show y'all a better picture of the, the mouth part of it, but so. When you were handing this to a doc, you were ha- you would be holding it in this area. Really, yeah, like in this area. And then when you put it in their hand, they could just use it, so anyways. That's a keratomerangure. I think it did say it was backbiting, did it say, yeah, or bonebiting? Alright, you guys, so I think we might be all done. That was pretty cool, huh? I hope you guys enjoyed it, I'm pretty sure, how long is this? This is probably way longer than what it needed to be. Oh no, I, I knew it was gonna be an hour, so am I at the hour mark? I can't see down here. Let's zoom this up, so I can see. Yep, alright, so, let's see here, oh, my buddy, my buddy. Hey, I'm back. Looking a hot mess, but anyway, so I hope you guys enjoyed it. I'll continue to go through the book, and I'll continue to post them, um, on, on Mondays at nine o'clock, until I'm through with the book. My goal is to take the test around February fifteenth, um, yeah, two thousand sixteen, and then, excuse me, immediately, or while, while I'm, um, working on my CST, or my, my, ooh, I can't even speak. While I'm working on my CSA, I'll get my CST, that's what I'm trying to say. And, um, I'll still be scrubbing, so I don't have to, luckily, they don't require us, at least for another year, or until December, they don't require us to, um, be off the clock to get these two hundred hours, so I'm really excited about that, I'm pretty sure I'll bust two hundred hours wide open, I'm not worried about that, yeah, so. At least I know seventy-five of them would be probably GYN cases, oh, I didn't show you guys that, that it makes you do like a case card. Um, I didn't need to do it, but let's, let's just see. Maybe not, alright, whatever. So, yeah. I'm gonna go ahead and, um, I'm gonna do my, I'm gonna get my CST next month, and I'm pretty sure I passed it, and I'm pretty sure you will too, because we're not gonna be bullshitting around this time and not studying, because that's what idiots do, and they waste three hundred dollars, really sick, because now I have to spend another three. But anyway, we're not gonna, you know, beat ourselves up about it or anything. So anyways, you guys, you know, tell me what you think, I know you guys are gonna give me feedback. Make sure you're following me, I'm gonna start, um, if you're not following me on YouTube, and, and you were, I'm gonna start separating my cosmetology stuff, cuz I'm a hairstylist, and I have my own little hair studio, and that my hair stuff floods my YouTube channel, so I'mma make another channel for that. But you can keep following me on the one that you are, if you want more surgical tech stuff. Oh, and I'm working in labor and delivery, uh, right now, at a new hospital, I'mma try to see if they'll let me pick up some PRN um, hours in their main row, I'm pretty sure they will, and if that's the case, oh my God, them two hundred hours is gonna be so easy to get, so. Yeah, I'll be taking like, somebody calls or crap, I don't know, anyways, you guys, see you later.